Good evening. I don't have any agenda for the special meeting. Do we have separate? Okay. So, the special meeting of February 7th is called to order. Mrs. Bartholomew, you want to do a roll call?
Mayor Schilling.
Here.
Councilwoman Beckmanini.
Here.
Here.
How are they?
Here.
Hurley?
Here.
McGuinness?
Here.
Slater?
Here.
I'm present. The purpose in a special meeting, we can only discuss the item that we set and was the purpose for revising the 2011 budget and future year's budget priorities and in future year priorities goes all the way out to 2013. And I would like to ask the staff as a kickoff of this if they would indicate what I found in looking for the information because I brought lots with me here about the fact that we have been asked to use 1.7 million of unallocated fund reserves and people have talked about the unallocated fund reserves before at other meetings. And it's my indication that those have been designated in future budgets. Is that a correct understanding? Mr. Surlag?
That's correct. I'd like Mr. Lamarrato to explain further.
Lamarrato?
Sure. In the fall 2010 three-year budget update, which was presented to City Council as a report, which also at that meeting, there was not one comment regarding the report. That did lay out and took a look at revising and going forward, looking at where we were to date and looking out over the next two years on what we thought would be our best projections going forward. It was mentioned in there, if anybody has it or not, but the chart there showed the fund balance, undesignated fund balance at the time, the dollar amount. And it also shows that at $10.7 million at June 30th, 2010, that would reduce to 7.8 million 2012, which is 15% of the general fund budget at that time. Those funds are necessary to carry us forward. We also mentioned that in our estimates that the property taxes for 2011-12 were going to be reduced by at least $700,000 from our first projection in our budget and 2012-13 additional $790,000. That is part of the reason why we needed to reallocate those funds over those two-year period of time.
Does that was in addition to the 10.3 reduction in taxable value or included?
That was a new 10.3 reduction as of our current, as of this year.
Right.
Going forward, next year, we're projecting a 10.3% reduction. That was more than what we had anticipated when this was put together in April of 2009.
Okay. And then in 2013, it's a 5.5 additional reduction?
Yes.
My other question is the promises made in the retirement system monies. I mentioned at the other meeting about the fact that the open county budget symposium talked about the fact that value to fund pensions by local governments, the trigger that could cause an appointment of an emergency financial manager. The reason I bring that up is that I'm concerned with suggestions being made that we're having savings in retirement fund, which we did for this year because it was a good year with investments. But I remember a couple of years before that when my own 401K, every time the thing would come, it'd open the envelope because it was $9,000 less here and money less here. And this is money that I had put in from all the years when I was working, you know, and accumulated. So, my concern is our requirements on keeping a certain amount of money in retirement and not trying to use it for other kinds of things. Councilwoman, may I put a comment?
One of our pieces that we received on basic financial principles and operations of the retirement system quotes the constitution of the state of Michigan, and that's where we take our oath, which says, "Financial benefits arising on account of service rendered in each fiscal year shall be funded during that year, and such funding shall not be used for financing unfunded accrued liabilities." That's just as clear as it can be, and that's the state constitution. So, our obligation is always going to be to the state constitution, U.S. Constitution, federal law, state constitution, state laws.
Lamarrato, do you have something else?
Sure. First of all, the $410,000 reduction from the $980,000 increase for next year, 410 was based on the 2009, December 31st, 2009 actuarial report. Just to show you how the numbers could move, with the 2009 investment performance, the fund did very well. They had an actual return of 23.6% or an investment gain of $14.7 million. When we received our 2008 actuarial information and they projected out going forward each year, going out five years, what would happen, even with the 23.6% gain, our contribution was $60,000 more than what their 2008 estimate said it would be for 2009. Now, you can't base it on until we get our actual numbers in for 2010, which will not be probably for a month, a month or so at least, what our number is going to be. We have a number in our budget that we're using for next year's budget to start off the process. But it could be 410,000, it could be 400,000 less, it could be $500,000 less. We won't know until you look at the total plan. It's not only just the investment return, that's one portion of the valuation. They also look at payroll adjustments and so forth. They look at how many people have retired, how many people are still on the board and still on the retirement rolls and so forth. There's a lot of factors that go into that. So, first of all, the, you cannot really, the $14.7 million is a given number. We do not know what the 2010 number is yet, and that $410,000 savings was based on a 2009 number, which will change. And going back, looking at actual investment gains or losses over the last five years, we do amortize it 20% a year over five years. So, even though we had a gain of 14.7, we'll take 20% of that each year, and that's how we recognize that gain. 2008, there was a $42.3 million loss, which will be offset over five years. 2007, we had a $3.4 million gain. 2006, $3.3 million gain. 2005, a $5.8 million loss. So, those are all amortized over. You take 20% of those each year, and that factors into our actual investment return for that year, which is used for the valuation. So, that is a concern. And even though we could say, "Well, it may go down 410,000," or whatever that number may be, the actual increase is still over $572,000 over this current year. And that's what we have factored in going forward into the second year of the budget. So, those are major concerns going that route. Taxes, utilizing fund balance, we are utilizing more of fund balance than we had initially proposed for each of those two years to balance the budget.
And if people look at their, I'm hoping council brought their budgets going up to 2013 because on page eight in the 1213 budget, talking about positions that have been deleted in that budget, 17 positions in police, lieutenant, police officer, police service aide, records clerk sergeant, two sergeants, and secretary, 10 police officers. We had a rather lengthy discussion at this table about keeping monies in the budget in order to keep our personnel in public safety at a level that we felt would be acceptable. We're going to be getting our ICMA report. We don't know if they're going to tell us we've cut enough, we've cut too much, what we should adjust. We don't have that information yet. Every time I look at the funds that are looking ahead, since we're doing a three-year budget, and yes, we said we were going to make adjustments if we needed to, we need to look at those obligations for a three-year budget because that's exactly what the people of the county have been telling us, that in order to be more sustainable, in order to do a good job, you need to have more than just a year budget. So, I'm concerned that if we're trying to make adjustments to just one year's budget to do something, how that impacts further budgets. And I don't want to be the only one asking questions here. I think that all council members should jump in and indicate what they feel. So, who wants to go next? Councilwoman Hurley?
Well, when we do a budget every year, we rely on actuarial reports and so forth, and bake those into numbers. And we knew that when we did the budget, I recall we were saying we were $80,000 short, you know, funding the pensions. So, it's logical to me, if you get new actuarial reports, you'd update your budget with that based on the most recent information. And that's what I'm hoping to see. As we get more information, as we look more at the revenue, we look more at the expenses and what we're doing, the benefits of what we're doing with negotiations, with the labor force and so forth, with actuarial reports, that's all used to update the budget on an ongoing basis. And we shouldn't have to wait for a big meeting to do it, you know? That way, we get a snapshot, and I think with the great financial system we have, that can be updated quite regularly. We should be seeing that as an ongoing process, not waiting for a meeting like this to...
Well, it was presented to council back in November.
In November.
And there was not one comment from anyone at that meeting that laid out, highlighted every change in a three-year budget.
Right.
Highlighted it. They gave an explanation of each year and what revenues and expenditure wise and what we're looking at. And when you really look at a three-year budget, and what was mentioned earlier about its evolves and so forth, really the definition of evolve is really to develop gradually. And that's what we're doing, and it's not necessarily make a million changes every month on the budget process. First of all, we don't have a staff to make a million changes every month. We don't have staffs of thousands like the county does have for their budget department, the several analysts that they have. So, we look at it. We just got your quarterly report tonight, which gave you an update for the current year. We're moving along as projected. There was no, nothing that really stood out there, other than we may do a little better in state shared revenue, and we'll see how that goes because it's probably likely that they're going to have to cut it if their state's $2 billion in the hole. I think they're going to come after that. And we're a little even optimistic in that area. So, we did get a six-month review tonight for the current year, which says that we are on track with the current year's budget. What you have to also take into consideration is last year, we did not have any reappropriation of fund balance. So, we were able to, by concessions, by layoffs and layoffs earlier than anticipated, we were able to come in very well on the expenditure side. Now, so whatever you had there, whatever you had, is it revenues over expenditures, that was strictly, you know, add to the fund balance, we added to the fund balance last year. This current year, we have $2.4 million of reappropriation of the fund balance. We have to cover that before we can do any addition to our fund balance. So, whether expenditures come in under budget or revenues come in over budget, we have to hit $2.4 million before we do anything at all to our fund balance. So, whenever you reappropriate, you can't count it as a revenue source, even though you use it as a revenue source to balance your budget. You have to make up that. So, this year is going to be a tight year again, and normally, when you do that, when you reappropriate fund balance, you're looking at expenditures probably over revenues because you can't count that money as a revenue source. So, unless you cut your expenditures by over $2.4 million, you're not going to have an addition to fund balance this year.
Of course, the 2.4 is not in the 10.8 though.
It's not in 10.8. That's correct. The 10.8 is scheduled out, like I said, over the next two years to get us to council's direction of 15% of fund balance to the general fund budget.
Councilwoman Howaray?
Yes. Well, we might, we might as well walk, if you can walk us through it, because we have in our multi-year budget, 9.0 coming out in 2011. And in your CAFR, you have it at 10.8.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a good point because...
Excuse me, just what page is that? Because some of them's kind of...
It's on page, it's on page X of the DNA in the CAFR, but it's in, 9.0, I think, is on, let's see here. It would have been in our current budget document, I believe, because we had projected to come out of the current year at 9.0, so...
It's not in the...
No, because if you go into the multi-year, you're going to show it going down to 7.8.
Well, because I think according to this, what's it called? Page six of the 2010-11 budget, the 9.0 million estimate is mentioned. And that's page six. First of all, let's get into clarifications here. The $9 million was in the posed 2010-11 budget as an estimated fund balance at June 30th, 2010. That was prepared in advance, looking at revenues and expenditures, projecting those out. The actual of 10.7 was an audited number as of June 30th, 2010. So, first of all, you have two different sources of information here. One was used in the budget process, which was developed in March or April of the year. June 30th, 2010 was the actual results for that year. There's not a $1.7 million gain. If you look at the audit reports from year to year, 2010, undesigned and unreserved fund balance is 10.7 million. 2009, June 30th, 2009, the unreserved, undesigned was $10.5 million. So, you picked up $200,000 in your actual undesigned and unreserved fund balance. There was a gain last year because we had expenditures under budget, we also had revenues that were under budget, but there was a gain, there was an addition of fund balance. We also took that $2.4 million of that, and we reappropriated in the next year's budget.
Right.
So, you're used, there's two different numbers you're looking at here. One was a budget estimate, and one is an actual audited number. So, you have to take that into consideration when you look at the numbers.
And the other thing to take into consideration, John, would be the fact that we didn't appropriate any fund balance in the previous fiscal year. We did now. So, to compare apples to apples, you have to actually include that 2.4 that's actually designated for the subsequent, excuse me, the subsequent year to balance the budget.
Well, it is, it is shown as a designation of fund balance in the audit report, $2.4 million. We still have undesigned funds of 10.7 million.
Right. And so, I guess the issue is that if the budget comes in exactly as presented, then we would end the year with 10.8 million.
If it is exactly, exactly as presented, we would still have an undesigned, unreserved 10.7. And actually, we wouldn't because if it comes exactly as it is, we are, we have to come up with next year's reappropriation of fund balance of about 1.9 million. So, it'll be that 1.9 less of the 10.7. So, if it comes in exactly, if everything matches out exactly, we'll be about 1.9 less in unreserved, undesigned fund balance because we're reappropriating 1.9 million.
And what percentage would that be if that came in at that?
I can't hear you.
Asking him what percentage that would be if it came on.
That would be at 16%. And then the following year, it goes to 15, 7.8 would be 15%, which is where we're at. That's why we need those funds currently in the budget to carry us over for the next two years to keep us at that level.
And so, and 10.8 minus 1.8 is nine versus the 7.8 that's referenced in our budget document.
I'm not sure where I am. Page three.
All I'm going is from the updated, fall updated budget, which is, this was once again developed as part of our original budget document back in April of 2010. The fall update shows the revisions based on our audit report and going forward for the next two years. So, the update is what you have to use from this point.
This predates the audit report.
Is that the November 11?
This is November 2010. It was presented in November 2010.
Right.
The audit came in, the audit was as of June 30th, 2010. The audit report came to council in December. Basically, we had those numbers. It's audit preparation time to get the document out, but we had the numbers. That's why we got it as soon as we could to council in November.
Councilwoman Flyer?
Just to clarify, so the most accurate report that we have is the fall 2010 update, and those are the numbers we should be using, not numbers from this budget per se.
Right.
We should be using these figures.
These numbers here, fall 2010. We are working on our winter 2011, we'll call it, update. And as part of our budget process, we're in our budget process right now. We, I've got a fairly good handle on the revenue side for next year for 2011-12. There's still a couple of departments I need to give a little bit more information on, mainly in the streets area. But right now, and this was going to come to you, I don't want to, I don't want to give, I want to give it as we do a formal update until I get the expenditures, and expenditures will not, departments are due to have the request back in by the end of this week for next year's budget. That means they turn them in at that point. That means that's when we start our review process. So, for example, the one date I've mentioned, February 21st, is not really possible to have any kind of update to review all the budgets by that point. It's not, it's not possible. But anyways, as far as the estimate for the current year, we're looking at about a $500,000 reduction in revenue from what we had in our updated three-year budget. And for 2012, a $824,000 reduction from what we had. That's just based on our current, on our current state of affairs right now. So, we're not going into 2011-12. We're already going to be faced with our existing budget with some of the cuts that were made in option one of $800,000. We have to come up with at least $800,000 in revenue even to meet that, let alone money for any other services, let alone money for any ICMA recommendations that were there for additional staff, or to replace any of the recreation programming and so forth that was presented to tonight's meeting also, and all those cuts that are going to be made there. That doesn't take any of those into consideration. So, we're already at this point, $800,000 less than our revised budget for next year.
The ICMA report mentions about in Public Works, five people that need to be replaced in order for the thing to be sustainable, and that is one of our core services.
We'll take a look at that at budget time. We're going to go in, we're going in with option one, and we're going to go in with a reduction of 10 at this point. We're following option one, which has 10 people reduced in that area. And Parks and Rec has several people reduced. Where we're going in following option one, in our initial, as departments turn in their budget request, they were directed to follow option one and turn it in. We'll take a look at that and see what, what that means and compare those numbers then to our estimated numbers. And I could tell you that we are very accurate in our projections for 2011-12 numbers. For example, the police department, which is the largest budget, our original projections for 11-12 is a $150,000 difference in their $24.7 million budget and what we, what we had projected in our three-year budget and what they are coming through with in their initial request. So, I feel confident in our 2011-12 expenditure projections, and we'll have to see as they all come in. We have a lot of factors that go into it. We have this whole EVA program. There's other things that go into that. But we'll have to, let's see where we end up there. But the revenues at this point are pretty good at this point, and I'm very confident in those numbers, other than I got to look at some of the street number revenues and so forth. But right now, we're showing up about $800,000 less than what our projected three-year budget is for next year. So, we're going to have to make that up before anything else gets done.
So, when you say the numbers are good, you mean the numbers are accurate?
Yeah, not good, but accurate.
And then we were recently listed in the paper, some cities expecting, we were at seven, minus 7%, I think, in the most recent one in the paper. So, a lot going on. None of it off. Red isn't a good color.
Councilwoman Flyer?
If I could ask you a question. You've seen the flyers on TCU. Would it be safe to say that most of that data that they are presenting is from this book? Or are they trying to mix? Or are they trying to mix some of it from this book as opposed to the fall update? Do you see anything?
I thought, I don't really, I don't see anything from the fall update. I see some from there, some from the audit report. I do have a copy of that, and you can see my notes here.
Would it be fair that that's not accurate? It's not a fair representation of how the city is from your perspective?
Well, it did not take into consideration the fall 2010 update, because if they would have, that would have not, there is not 1.7 million in a budget surplus. That money is used over the next two years to balance those two years' budgets. That's, the pension savings is an estimate at this point, it's not a hard number. Current library maintenance at .2 million, it's $97,050. That was picked up from a line item in the budget that was library and museum. That's not correct. The unreserved, undesigned fund balance increased 1.7. No, it increased 200,000. So based on the, this is number two, based on the manager's letter and defined benefit contribution, should be really estimated reduction of 410 for 2011-12. Also, there's a mention of $572,000 increase in the overall contribution. There's no mention at all about the books and subscriptions that the library cost that goes within a $425,000. There's no mention at all about the tax reductions, the next two years of $700,000 in 11-12, $790,000 in 12-13. That's about summarizing something.
Councilman Flair?
Well, no, I mean, and I-
I'm trying to listen from the left of the floor. It's hard to.
As I sit here and as I cogitated over the weekend and ran numbers and drove down crazy this afternoon, absolutely. I don't think that there's anyone sitting here that does not want to try and find a way to maintain some modicum of library services. However, we go back to the same discussion we had in April. What are you going to cut to do it? Because if there was 1.7 million dollars, I would say to somebody, call the contractors who say they can do this so cheaply, and we'll, we'll put that money in there. But just like you do with your home budget, if you know you've got to put a new roof on next year, you don't spend every nickel you have this year. And we know that we've got 1.5 in the next two years coming at us that we can't make up, and that's what we know of. And with all due respect, permit fees, I don't think are as dependable as, you know, to sit there and count on half a million here and half a million there based on permit fees or people driving drunk and us getting the right amount of fines. That's not what I want to balance my budget on. If there was, if there was a million and a half, if there was 2 million, we couldn't have the library that we have, but I'd certainly be willing to say to somebody, I'm willing to spend that money. But there, there are not pots of money, and I guess part of it is, I heard somebody say the other day about the state budget, that for 10 years, they have tweaked around the margins and they've had marginal change. And the fact of the matter is, what cities and the state need is systemic change. We need to reinvent ourselves and find new ways of doing business, and spending money we don't have is probably not the way we want to do business in a new way. I cannot find a pot of money. So if we want to keep the library open, you have to cut something else. And given the emails we've had on how we've removed our snow, I don't see anybody saying they'd rather be able to check out books than have their street plowed. And if they want to check out books, we're looking at a week to plow snow, or we're looking at cops not coming to accidents that happen.
Yeah, we do know, as far as the revenue, the two main sources are property taxes and state shared revenue, and we are very confident what's going to happen. We may be even a little optimistic on the state shared revenue because the state of Michigan is in deep trouble. And that's one of the sources that they've used in the past. Last year, they reduced our budget almost $800,000 in the mid-year reduction. So right now, we may be a little optimistic in what we have in there as revenue right now.
And that's a $400 million pot to really use.
And remember, last year, education funding was still coming from the federal. So those bucks were being used that way as just kind of a hole. There are no funds like that this year. So we are, as Councilmember Beltrame used to say, up against education again, and I think this time, we will be on that losing end. We have to anticipate it. I think it was wise, Mr. Lamorato, to be conservative in the amount we anticipated coming. So we did get a little bit more, but I think it was because education was covered elsewhere. But I think, I appreciate Councilmember Beltrame's point, kind of sounds like my mother in my ear, you know, you can only spend $1 once, and how do we want to do it? It was, as we were forming this original budget, that we had this major conversation in this room, and I was an infrastructure advocate, which kind of went to, you know, what can we do on our police and so on? But infrastructure remains a huge issue, and I think rightly, Mayor, you pointed out, ICMA has faulted us for being five under. No matter what, as Councilmember Beltrame, I love the library, I want my books, but I want to flush the toilet and have water go that way. I want to throw on the faucet and have everyone uses the roads, everyone uses sewer, clean water. Those are the expectations. Everyone expects making a 911 call and having help come immediately. And that's where we put our focus. Those were what we, the manager calls the core, and that's how we built everything. So as long as we are looking at diminished revenue year after year after year, as long as we are looking at a multi-year budget, I think we have to look at 13 right now, going back 12, 11, and 10. And when it's presented, it will be 14, 13, 12, 11. I think that it is a cause for concern because we have no anticipated revenue coming in.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
I think in light of the conversations that we just had about goals and visions and talking about sustainability, that's the issue that we're dealing with right here at the table. And we've had some new information come to light in terms of what was handed down to us from the ICMA report. And I didn't see anything in that report that provided us with new sustainable forms of revenue that we can move money around. I think we've already highlighted tonight what the report has shown us, and that, that's in some areas, we will potentially be cutting so much that we won't be able to continue at the level of service that we're projecting for that department. And I think in light of getting that information and seeing some troubling movement, and I think that that's in terms of, I don't know if it's out of desperation, but I felt like there were a couple of things that we had really clearly defined on council over the time that I've been here, and that's in terms of what we discussed as the lowest level that we were willing to go with our unreserved funds. And we had a discussion about it. We brought it down to something that is, in my opinion, was as low as we could go to present our budget plan to the people that would judge us and give us a rating. I feel like it almost borders unethical, that we presented that plan, that we had that discussion, that we knew what sticking to that would bring for us in terms of stability for the citizens and our bond rating, and to lay that out there as our plan and now lay it on the chopping block as an option that we can just cut willy-nilly, I think is, one, not what I want to do. It's not the message that I want to send in terms of my fiscal responsibility, and I really do have an issue with the fact that that's what was laid out there, and now, you know, kind of as a last-ditch effort, as we're really seeing things come to light, that all the projections that we had been making are true, if not worse, and I have an issue with that. I have an issue with, you know, taking a potential, not even a windfall, because you have to look at things in terms of several-year period, not just one year, in terms of investment income, and jumping on the opportunity to spend that. I mean, it's just, it's not personally the way that I would run my own finances, and I can't imagine giving that as the kind of financial advice that we're going to show is the way that we would spend the citizens' money. So in terms of new sources of revenue, I haven't heard any. I think some of the things that have been thrown out there, they trouble me a little bit in terms of fiscal responsibility. I think we are still waiting on a piece of the pie that will come to us in terms of an ICMA report, and that will really complete the puzzle. But in terms of making any revisions, I think the only way to do that was to determine that there was new money or sustainable money that we hadn't, we hadn't thought of or we didn't see was there, or someone, someone else is able to point out for us, and I'm not seeing that at this point, and I'm not willing to take any of the other risky options to come up with some of those things in terms of a one-time fix.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Howard?
Actually, before we go jumping into policy issues, I'd like to make sure that we're all talking about the same thing. And one of the, one of the things that I would like to hone in on is something Mr. Lamorato said. I think he mentioned something about 820,000. He mentioned something that the situation changed subsequent to this November report to where we are today. And I guess I'd like to hone in on that and see if you could run that by me again. I don't think I quite caught that.
And looking over the revenues for 2011-12 budget, we've gone through the projections, gone through all the projections here, with the exception of a couple, with a couple road transfers in for major local roads, and that revenue number is 824,000 less than the revised fall 2011-12 revenue amount.
So in three months, we took an $800,000 hit, is what you're saying?
In three months. I'm saying this is looking at, this is looking at this current year and projecting out for next year. This is for next year's money.
The 2011-12, right.
This is next, 2000 is, at this time of the year, we do our projections for next year. So it's not a three-month hit there that was from back in November, basically, that was based on strictly on the revenues from the current year, where we thought we were going to be, and with the tax adjustment mainly, property tax adjustment and so forth. Now we look at every, all the accounts and so forth going forward for 2011-12, and that comes out 824,000 less.
So do I add up to the 168.5 increase in reappropriation that you had on this other report?
That is including that. Still, with the 168, with the, with the fund balance reappropriation of 1,918,500, we are still 824,000 short.
So what yours, is it 824,000 in addition to the 168.5, or is it an absolute number?
We would need an additional 824,000.
So that's about 680,000 or so, 650,000?
No.
Because you had, you have-
I have the 1,918 in there already.
Yeah, well, I'm looking at the November report, and at the time you were saying in 2012, we need an additional 168.5.
Right. That's in the, that's in the 1,918. That was increased.
Okay. Okay, so now it goes past two.
Right.
Okay. What about the current year that we're in, the 2011 year?
Current year, we're looking at, right now, revenues coming in about 500,000 under budget.
So there's a $1 million differential in three months? You have a $500,000 decrease in reappropriation, so now you're telling me I need a $500,000 increase?
Right.
And this happened between November 11-2010 and today?
Things change, yep.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to hone in on where we are.
Six months of activity or seven months of activity? That's what, yeah, that's what happened.
Oh, it's three months more of activity.
But it's actual results of seven months of activity.
Mm-hmm. It's three months more activity than we had three months ago, though, right?
The three months, that was updated as of the audit report that was, that was done, and then we looked at the first part of the year.
I guess, I guess the thing that would help is if we could just have an updated one of these, and that way I-
Well, that's what I'm working on. We're working on it, oh, we're working on it in summer.
That's fine.
This here, the revenues, I said we have the revenues. I don't want to give a number on expenditures-
But you're missing a couple things, you said.
And in a couple weeks, or less than maybe two or three weeks, we'll have a more better number on the expenditure side. Why come up with, and I would like to have a good, accurate number based on the department's request and our review of those and so forth to come up with a revised expenditure number.
Where would you say, between what you have and what I have here, where are we getting hit the hardest?
A lot of it's charges for services is the main area. That's a, that's a large number overall. Total charges for services, and it's a $7 million number, basically, but we're seeing reductions in recreation uses and charges and across the board, pretty much in those, in that area. That's one of the main. Investment income is still down of the very low interest rates that are out there right Those two areas are probably the main, the main cause.
Okay. The other thing I think that would be helpful, at least to me, would be on the, on getting a handle on policy with respect to budgeting for changes in the actuarial evaluation of the pension fund. And subsequent to our budget session in 2008, about two months later, we had a immediate, obviously took, was it 2008? Must have been 2009. 2009, we took a, there was a report that came from the city manager's office, I think in June, that said that for the year ending June 30th, 2010, and the subsequent year for June 30th, excuse me, 2009 and also 2010, we were going to have a, an issue to deal with on the actuarial evaluation that came out of 2008. It didn't, it's probably not surprising, but it was a, it was a large amount to gulp because of the bad performance in 2008, that our fund as well as pretty much everybody else in the entire world hit. It just seems that if we're going to take the worst case scenario as we backfill that, we should start to incorporate that as well.
Well, we, what we do is we come up with an estimate where we think we're going to be based on the actuary, looking at their five-year projection. We also look at, we take that into consideration, and we kind of take, well, we're going to, are we going to meet at least our six and a half percent, which we should for 2010, at least do that. And so we take that into consideration, and how far off, what happened to their, their request last time, we were, we were way over 14 million to the good, and our contribution still went up $60,000 from what their projection was from the year before. Now, there's some large increases in there. What that could help us do, if it does come in at, and it stays around at $400,000, that could help us towards our $800,000 gap we have to make up. But that's what comes in right now. We're planning on roughly an estimate of close to what the actuaries have in there for next year. And if that comes in 400,000 or less, or whatever, we could use that towards the 800,000 that we're short in the revenue side.
Yeah, because I took the, the two reports that your office had provided to council, one was based on 2008, and one was basically 2009, and when you get into about year, I think it's year two or three, the numbers start to get quite large. to get quite large, the differentials between those two reports. And we're having, we're having big swings, first going down from the 2008, and now going up for the last two years of performance. And I think, I think it's important from a, because these are large swings. It's a huge swing down, we had to amortize, what was it, fifty million or something? And then now we're amortizing smaller chunks over the last two years. But I don't want to, I don't want to actually have the worst-case scenario incorporated when things have drastically changed in the last two years.
Well, we're not, we're based, we have 2009, we know what that number is. That's for the current year. We actually were sixty thousand dollars short from what we had originally budgeted for this current year. Sixty thousand dollars in the scheme of things, sixty, fifty, eight million dollar budget is not a major concern. We did mention, we did note that in our report. Now, if we have a four hundred thousand dollar reduction in those costs, that would, that's based under 2009, we aren't going to know for a month or so yet what the actual 2010 number is going to be. And so, what we're using right now, we're using that estimate roughly, which if it is four hundred thousand dollars less, once again, I could say we could use that towards our eight hundred thousand shortfall. But we're not taking, we're taking their estimate, and we're using their revised estimate. And if it's a little more than that, then it helps us more towards our eight hundred thousand dollar shortfall.
Yeah, I just took what you had, and I had a sixty-four thousand dollar hit in the current year, and a benefit of four hundred and ten thousand in 2012, and then a benefit of nine hundred and eight thousand in 2013.
Right. Those are all, those numbers were projected through-
A million four, a million nine, a million eight.
And those are adjusted each year.
Right.
Once we get our new actuarial, they'll come up with a new five-year projection. We'll take a look at that and see how we compare going forward again for those years. But we have, the exact number is not due until we actually have our evaluation done.
Right, and as large as those numbers sound, we had monster numbers, the negative, much greater than that when we were kind of following-
Quite a few large gains to get up to forty-three million.
And that's why smoothing is important. And then again, we weren't the only ones. I mean, 2007 was a significant year. So, smoothing matters, and that's why it's done now.
And what'll new retirees do to those numbers?
New retirees? Well, there's-
Because you said part of it is, you know, the number and when they retire.
But we move, we, within the retirement system, within the retirement system, we have employee contributions as a reserve. We have employer contributions as a reserve, and we have retiree benefits payable as a reserve. So, what we'll do is when anybody retires, we move sufficient funds. We take their employee contributions from that reserve, and whatever is needed from the employer's reserve, and transfer that to the retiree benefit payable reserve fund. So, it all comes into play now. They'll take a look at, you know, mortality rates and so forth, too, and, you know, if according to what they had estimated, who may pass away or whatever, and I won't talk about it, who may pass away in the next year or so, and how many actually did, how many didn't, how many actually retired, what they projected, what they pay, I want to say pay increase or pay decreases, whatever that may be, how that factors all in to that.
But the EREP is probably going to increase the cost of the pension plan based on the actuarial report, and we're expecting to have cost savings on the labor side to offset that?
Right.
Yeah?
I have to inject something here, because I didn't realize this when we started the meeting. You know, usually we can go on a meeting till midnight, and then we can extend it longer. Well, when we have a special meeting, we can't suspend the rules to extend the meeting. So, we have to consider ending discussion to allow for audience participation. And I would ask the audience, even though you filled out a card, that you, that they would limit their comment to one minute in order, I don't know how many of these people are going to want to speak. So, with that, I'm going to call on Mr. Zerlay, because I think he has something he wants to ask council before we call on the audience.
Thank you, and I do. I'd like to know, as a governing body, what do you expect from staff to come back with you for you to, relative to the resolution that was postponed?
I think all you have to do is bring the resolution back. That's just been postponed from my understanding, that's what we need to do.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I am comfortable with that. I think that, if I could, when Councilmember Beltramini had an idea, she did write it in a narrative form, and then presented us, and then we were able to have a study session. I guess I would have, I understand perhaps for discussion, because in here, there are real numbers and real places to look, and it helped for study. I just would have appreciated, I think, in the narrative form, and then had this meeting without having it in a formal presentation. So, I take it the same way as when you presented your narrative regarding what you would like to see with seed money. And that was well thought out and really well done. This, too, had a lot of places to look at, but I'm certainly not expecting anything from staff. I think each of us has done number crunching or finding sources of this in going through. And I don't think this is a sustainable, nor I think is it a viable resolution.
Councilwoman Slater?
Well, I think I have to concur with that. I haven't heard anything from anybody here tonight that's different than what I heard April of last year. It's still bad. I don't, I haven't heard a solution from anybody to change what we did last year. Four members of this council voted for this budget, for this budget, because I think the four of us felt we had no options. It's no different today than it was back in April. The only way that we can stop us from going downhill is to find a way to get some revenue. So, I think that's a challenge for all of us. The resolution is not the answer.
I think the resolution will come back to the table, because it was postponed to the 21st. But from the discussion around the table tonight, I think that you can see that it's not going to be passed by council, because the data and the facts and numbers don't support it. I'm sorry we had to cut off the discussion. I didn't realize that about the time I took the clock down, because I kept looking at the, it's eleven o'clock still. And when Mrs. Bartholomew told me that, I thought, well, I'll just have to go to the card, so. All right? Yes, Councilwoman Fleming?
I tell you, I'm really disappointed, because I really thought of this meeting, we had something to work with. I think John's tried to explain how the accounting, how the accounting works. But I come into this meeting optimistic that we might be able to come to the option-two library, not the option-one that we had. The option-two is probably a million five, million six. And I know that's what the community wants, and we heard from everybody, whether they voted for the village increase or not, that's what they want. But the question for this council is, can we do it, you know, given the latest financial information? I think what Martin did was good. I'm glad he pushed this out, it forced us to answer the questions and explore how the numbers really were flowing through. But I came to this meeting with a little more optimism that we would be able to come up with a plan, and I was hoping we'd be able to give the city manager direction to come up with a plan for, at a minimum, an option-two type library, which may be open just a few days a week, or a million five, million six budget. That's what I was really hoping from this meeting.
I still have, I still have a key question. I think it's imperative that there be some resolution to it. And it's this issue with the, what used to be called the undesignated and unreserved fund balance. And looking on page six of the 2010 budget year, it estimates an ending balance of 10.8 million dollars. And the 2.4 million has to be included, because it wasn't appropriated until one year after this budget was adopted. Therefore, you have to add the 2.4 million to the 10.8 million to get 13.2 million and compare it to the 10.8. And there is also a reference by the, by you, John, in the presentation of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, that we came in much better than expected, and then you explained why. So, if it's our intent to use that, because the situation is worse, I think we have to be honest and say that's what we're doing. But, you know, I have a feeling we're on the same page, but we're just speaking differently.
Well, the audit report, June 30, 2010, lays out the total general fund balance, what's undesignated, unreserved, what's reserved, and all the items. And it shows the 10.7 million as undesignated, unreserved. It shows 2.4 million designated for subsequent year's budgets. So, they're not, they're not combined together. That money's going to be used this year. If we don't use any of that, if we come in, like I said, if there's more than 2.4 million dollar revenues over expenditures or expenditures under that amount, then the only way that we will increase, we have to have a 2.4 swing somewhere to add anything to our fund balance. That money's already taken out of there, so.
Well, your budget to actual comparison, there is a fairly significant difference.
Budget to actual from which one were we talking?
2010.
From the budget time to the audit time?
Yeah.
That's, things happen in three months.
No, what I'm saying is there's a benefit to that. So, if it couldn't, if it wasn't, if it didn't exist at budget time, where is it being appropriated? And how's it being appropriated?
That's the, first of all, the nine million, is that what you're referring to, nine million versus a 10.7 or what?
No, we actually had budgeted 10.8. We came out at 2000, for the 2010 budget that was adopted in 2009. You can't assume that the 2.4 million dollars is appropriated, because it happened 12 months after this budget was adopted, and so.
I'm not seeing that point.
I mean, and if you just do a budget to actual for the 2010 year, is there not a benefit to the city based on budget to actual?
2000, the 2.4 was designated in our 2010-11 budget discussions. That's when it became a designation of fund balance. That's when the audit report, then, which went back to June 30, 2010, I can't show 13 million dollars in unreserved, undesignated funds when 2.4 of that is designated. So, you have to go backwards. When you do the June 30th audit report, I'm presented at that time. I can't show, because before June 30, 2010, we adopted our 2010-11 budget, which did designate 2.4 million dollars. So, I have to show it as a designation.
All right, I'm simply saying for the, for the financial year ending June 30, 2010, that there's a net benefit to the city on a budget to actual, or an actual to budget basis?
That we came in under, we came in under budget, the expenditures came in under budget, over 2 million dollars. Yeah, that's, that's true. But we're using that. That comes into play when we're saying, okay, now you have, you've increased 200,000 dollars or whatever, because you reallocated 2.4 of that money to next year's, to the subsequent year budget.
So, on a budget, on a budgetary basis, we're going to end 2011 where?
2011, if everything comes in exactly, if we don't have to use any fund balance at all, we should have an undesignated roughly 10.7 million or so.
Councilwoman Harrell, I'm sorry, but in order to meet with Open Meetings Act, I have to call on the people-
That's fine, I'll submit a whole load of questions to mention.
Folks, we can't allow more than just a minute, given the number of people that said they wanted to speak anyway.
Why don't you just ask how many of us are left? We can't all be there.
We must finish at 12. So, even if you haven't talked, when the clock goes 12, we have the meetings adjourned. So, Erv, Wendron? Okay, Erv, are you, you can just talk from there, and it'll pick up right here.
Okay.
Oh, there's a mic, but I don't know if it's turned on. Stand there. No, there's no microphone up there.
You have to speak into that to work.
Is this on?
Yeah, it's for video. It takes, it records it.
Go ahead.
I feel like I'm teaching a grad school of business class for MBA students, and the case study is Troy, Michigan. So, just a last word on the library, in the context of this discussion. For my work doing mediation, when we have two opposing sides that are very hardened in their opposition, so the goal with those two sides is to find common ground as a starter. And that is to first identify and then rank all the priorities that are shared. If, for example, that priority of priorities becomes to avoid closing the end of April for the sake of our kids, perhaps a twofold plan that reallocates funds to bias a year or so would work. But the quid pro quo would be that all sides would have to support in advance a new millage if the projections are accurate, but not an amount just enough for the library, but also to pay back this bridge loan if needed. So, this is where the disclosure and metrics that Councilwoman Beltramini mentioned. Is it Pollyanna? I'm not sure, but you need to find creative solutions and rank your priorities. And for those of you who are still awake, the trust has a Facebook page under that name. Thank you.
Paul Beck, are you here? Rob Carrigan?
Thanks, Mayor, and council members. I'm Rob Carrigan, West Troy. Listened with interest on your discussions tonight. I'm definitely pro keeping the library open. I would suggest that Assistant City Manager Lamorato come up with a definitive update as far as numbers are concerned, in terms of where the city is, so that all of you can agree that you're singing from the same sheet music, as opposed to, you've got so many budget books and updates like that. If there was a way to get a, an update that everybody can agree, we understand the numbers, this is where we come from. A lot of the discussions about this number and that number might be able to be reduced and more common ground achieved. Thank you very much.
Hand break, I know you're here.
I don't think I can do this in a minute, but I can do it under one minute. I'm sorry, I'm under five minutes.
You're going to have to do one minute, sir. I'm not going to give you five minutes, though.
I'm convinced that you all did something wrong in the court case. You filed a filing on January 19th where you said, furthermore, continued funding of the library at its current level would necessarily result in a layoff of one-third of the current police department personnel. That statement is wrong, and in the remainder of my package, I prove it. Ed Kempin tried to introduce this in court Wednesday morning, and the attorney argued, and the judge agreed to exclude it, because she hadn't had the chance to study it in advance. He didn't, Ed didn't have it in advance to share, because you violated your FOIA requirement of giving me the budget information within 15 business days with extension. We went over that by five business days. So, I got it at 3:30 in the afternoon, before the case was heard the following morning at 10:30. I worked all night. I was able to stick that spreadsheet in Ed's hands about five minutes before the judge entered the courtroom. That's my story. Please look at the spreadsheet. The numbers I'm using are directly out of your attached budget data. And I just couldn't stand to make my printer run 29 pages 13 times, so Mrs. Bartholomew has the police department part of the budget data. Thank you.
Joan App? Jerry Dagger? Jim Savage? There's no mic over there. Oh, just going to stand there.
I don't think I need a mic.
Go ahead.
I guess, I have a couple of questions, and it's, one question has been asked many times, and others, did the management look at all options before they went into this and before they presented the budget, and before they then to close the library? And we know that the, this downturn in the economy was in swing before the countrywide mortgage collapse, and that was like around 2006, I think it was. So, did the management have opportunities to cut a lot of what we might consider unnecessary spending? One, of course, being the $2 million to change the color of the- One, of course, being the $2 million to change the color of the cement at Rochester Road and Big Beaver. Another one is the money, and I don't know what the amounts are, that were put into the transit center. Was that a necessary? Would we rather have a library than a transit center? And so there was all these things that I never heard mentioned as being an option before we closed the library. So I am a little doubtful whether management did do its research in what could go before the library. So that maybe doesn't help us a whole lot right now, except there was one other option that I had never heard mentioned, and that was, was it considered at all a city income tax? I haven't heard that mentioned. Was that ever a consideration? I am not proposing this.
It's never been considered.
This is not something, more taxes is not something I'm particularly favored on. However, I do believe that income tax is the most fair overall tax.
I have to cut you off here.
Okay.
Linda Kyma?
Good evening. I debated whether to stay or not. I'm glad I did, but I'm angry. I'm very angry. Martin's, Martin Horlach's proposal to save the library was a valiant effort with misinformation again, and it may have saved the library for one year, enough time to get him elected, but it would have sacrificed this city, and I'm tired, I'm tired of this. I mean, 17 cities surrounding Troy approved millages for libraries and quality of life. Ours has been defeated repeatedly because of misinformation. I mean, it's evident, all Mr. Horlach had to do is speak to Mr. Lamorato and get explanation before putting out the mailer and bringing his motion to the city council. I'm angry. I'm very angry. You're putting the city at risk as a political ploy. So please, I'm, I'm begging you, stop sacrificing this city for your own political gain. 98% of Michigan libraries depend on local municipalities for funding, 70% of which comes from a dedicated millage. Thank you.
Ellen Hunter?
And I'm almost sorry to use up your time, but my last minute wasn't going to add much value to where you were going to get from here, anyway. I guess maybe to continue that message, you know, being a voice of the customer out there, I'm out there talking, I'm hearing, I've worked for the city, I know the realities. You have a serious morale issue that now permeates. It has gone from city hall throughout this community. People are in full-on hatred, anger mode directed at city hall and the servants. And it is clear, there are members of this council who have the ear of our residents. And it's time to start communicating in a manner that will re-engender this breed of core that I enjoyed in this community for so long. Numbers, 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 that's awesome. But if you're going to be a leader, you need to use both sides of your brain. And by not doing so and by miscommunicating, we have a serious issue in this community where people have to come together. I'm worried, and I've never felt that way two years ago. It needs to be fixed, and there are people who can do it. Thank you.
Edna Abraham?
Governor Snyder is attempting to run the state like a business, where in a business, you have to look at two sides, revenue and expenditures. And I feel like the focus has been on expenditures, and we really need to focus on revenues. And I came from a company, I worked for a company that went through bankruptcy. There's so much fat that you can cut until you start hitting muscle and bone, and it affects your infrastructure, and you don't have a viable company. If you want to have sustainability, we really need to focus on revenue, and everything needs to be on the table. It's not just cuts. Thank you.
It concludes those that asked to speak, and this meeting's adjourned.